Please rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I will now draw this independent school district number 544 board meeting to order. Is our meeting okay?
Your mic's not on.
Well, that was...
You just got it, you got it.
Just got it. Edith?
Your rock's gone.
Okay. My mouth tends to go to the left. Okay. We will begin our board meeting tonight by establishing a forum. I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Kelly Graff.
Here.
Jenny Christensen.
Present.
Missy Hermes, present. Melanie Cole.
Present.
Steven Biggison.
Here.
We have a board.
Thank you. The first item of the agenda is to seek approval for the agenda. Would somebody make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye? The agenda is approved, and I will offer this resolution on acknowledgements to thank the following: The 544 Education Foundation for their donation to assist with activities at the Alternative Learning Center. Thank you to Vector Windows and Fergus Home and Hardware for their donations to the Fergus Falls Robotics Team. Thank you to the Church of the Nazarene and Northwestern Bank for donating food and snacks for the Otter Closet at Kennedy Secondary School. Thank you to Lake Region Hospital for donating hospital beds for the Certified Nurses Association Assistant Program at the Fergus Falls High School. And thank you to Arvig for their donation of two laptops to the ALC Audio-Visual Club for video editing. So, as I state, I will offer this resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Will you make any discussions? Nope? Okay.
All right. Kelly Graff.
Yes. Yes.
Jenny Christensen.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes?
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Steven Biggison.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We have a variety of reports. This evening, our principals are here, and we'll begin with John Steinbrenner, the elementary principal at Lincoln School.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Nice evening, thanks.
Thank you. It should work. We'll get it, yeah. Okay, thanks. They've just broken my report down here into a couple different categories, from the early childhood and kindergarten. They just want to start by saying that my voice is a little bit raspy. I don't know that my immune system was prepared for an early childhood or early learning center, so my body's learning some new antibodies right now, so we're doing okay. So I just want to let you know that we just completed our voluntary pre-K application for the upcoming school year, and that's funding that was made available to us this year, and that came with a little bit of extra work on our side, just as far as figuring it out and learning how that funding stream works for us. But we've really solidified that voluntary pre-K plan now and have submitted the application for the upcoming school year. Best guess is that, or every indication rather, is that we will continue to be provided some seats. However, we won't know that until May. But all signs are pointing to things positive in that direction. You know, just an extension off of that, this year we have 90 students in our four- and five-year-old programming that had, where families had access to that funding. And for that reason, we were able to really, really minimize the cost for families to attend Otter Preschool. To date, we have not had any parents reach out to say that, you know, for financial reasons, they're just not able to continue to participate in Otter Preschool. So I think it continues to provide access for all families, but certainly meeting the needs of those families that might otherwise have some financial difficulty attending preschool. So really benefiting the community. You know, we have 90 students in our current four- or five-year-old program, expecting as many of those who are ready for kindergarten to continue on at Lincoln School next year as kindergartners. Our conferences are coming up the second week of February, and so we'll be having those conversations with family members there about their plans for the upcoming school year. There are some kiddos that may just choose to do one more year of preschool developmentally, maybe not quite there, but our plan is to have 90 kiddos who are currently in preschool moving on to our kindergarten. Along with those meetings, our Early Childhood Special Education Department has done a really nice job here lately as far as developing some additional transition programming that they'll be incorporating next year. So really blending the Otter Preschool and some of the early childhood special education experiences into some half-day and full-day offerings, really capturing more minutes with kids from an early intervention standpoint. So Nancy Reer and Julie Domino on the Early Childhood Special Ed team have just done a fantastic job of digging into that. So special thanks to those folks. From an ECFE side of things, our winter sessions are beginning to roll out now. Those started here last week and will continue through the month of April. We have 18 unique opportunities offered during the winter and spring sessions, and those are both in the mornings and in the early afternoons. So some nice participation there coming from the public accessing our ECFE programming. And the easiest way to do that for folks who might be listening is there's still time to register online through the district website. From kindergarten standpoint, some adjustments were made this year as far as our title programming and our multi-tiered systems and supports. Ms. Kim Walbotney is a full-time teacher at Lincoln School this year, and this is just a nice story here that I wanted to share. So at the beginning of the school year, we set out to do some baseline measurements, and we identified some students that were still performing below grade level in the area of reading. And so we gathered those students up, set a schedule, and began to work with them. And Kim works with 50, about 50 students per day, but of those 50 students at this last benchmarking period in January, she was able to take students from where they were, not performing at grade level, and move them to performing at grade level. And the interesting thing about that is everyone else at the same time who continued to perform at grade level was also making gains, and so not only did she cover the gap, but she also got them to the point where they needed to be. So I think just as far as getting students what they need as early as possible, that investment early on at the kindergarten level is just going to continue to pay off for years to come. The lovely part about that delivery model is then when those students are at grade level, they're also peeking to see who isn't quite there yet, or who didn't make those gains over the first part of the year, and those students have then just funneled into working with Kim. I'm giving some credit to Kim Walbotney, and it's also important to recognize that Kim is collaborating each and every day with the homeroom teachers to ensure that they are on the same page and delivering that content so that kids can learn as much as they can. Kindergarten meet-and-greet. So it's that fun time of year when we're really focused on what we're doing now, but also beginning to think about the upcoming school year. And so we will have that kindergarten meet-and-greet, and that's on March 21st, and that's during the middle of the day. It's, I believe it's end of a third quarter, and so it's an early out on that day. And so we'll have meet-and-greet options. The first is at 12:45 and the second at 12:15. All of you are certainly invited to come out in a tent. But we'll send out some postcards to families. We've been communicating that along the way through weekly notifications to our Otter Preschool families, but certainly there are other kindergartners out there that we would love to be part of Lincoln School next year. Aside from that, that's what I had on my list today, unless any of you have some specific questions that you'd like me to answer.
Yeah, a couple, just a couple. When you switched the meet-and-greet to the middle of the day, what was the reason for that? And the second question is, used to be any...
It was.
Do you feel like it excludes some families that can't make it during the day?
Sure. So we did have meet-and-greet last year during the middle of the day, and I don't have a great reference point outside of, it was really well-attended. I don't think that we had diminished attendance from years past. It might have been a case where there was one parent able to be there rather than both parents able to be there, but I feel like last year we had a really nice turnout during the day. And it might blend well this year with just the overall early outs and some parents' availability there.
How much time does Ms. Walbotney spend at Lincoln? She's in...
She's there throughout the day.
All day?
All day.
Okay. I didn't know if she was splitting her time.
And she's busy from 8:30 until 3 o'clock. It's just one four-to-five-person group after another, all the long day. She does take time to have lunch in there, but aside from that, she's pulling students out and working with them. So it's really paying off. It's lovely.
Yeah, that's great news. Any other questions for Principal Steinbrenner?
Thanks, Wolf.
Thank you. Our next principal to report would be Scott Colbeck from McKinley &amp; Adams School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Earlier this year, I talked a little bit about the staff members. Between our elementary schools that were on maternity leave, we started this school year with four teachers out. I'm happy to report that all of those teachers are back now teaching. Yeah? A little taller than Mr. Steinbrenner. Is that what you're saying? So four are back, now one is out, and then two more will be out before the school year's over. So seven people out on maternity leave between the two buildings of McKinley and Adams. So that has created some unique challenges. We have been able to secure people to cover all of those positions, but we are still working on one that will probably be starting sometime in March. And then recently found out that we're at number eight now, but that one won't impact this school year. It'll impact the start of the next school year. I just want to tell you a quick little story about teamwork. This past Friday, seven of our 22 regular head classroom teachers between McKinley and Adams were out. There was a lot of illness going around. A special thanks to Adams School Secretary Brittany Conrad, whose normal day starts at 7:30. She came in on Friday morning at 6:30 to start working on piecing all of this together, to make sure that all of our classrooms were covered. And then a special thank you to our three interventionists at Adams School who piecemealed their day together to make sure we could cover one of those seven classrooms. And that was Mr. Chad Kep and Mrs. Jessica Mulstreet and Mrs. Courtney Anderson. The three of them took bits and pieces of their day, so there was one classroom at Adams School that got a little taste of three different interventionists throughout the course of the day as the regular head classroom teacher. So I just wanted to recognize Brittany for her work. She realized on Thursday evening that, ooh, tomorrow's looking to be a tricky, tough day, so again, normally starts at 7:30, who knows they're at 6:30. A little bit about the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. We know at one time, at one point in time, they weren't staffed like they used to be, and therefore that limited how often our third graders would go visit. They are now, I don't want to say fully staffed, because I don't know, but they have more staff, and now our third graders are back to what we've known historically, that I think our third-grade classrooms get out there seven times over the course of a school year, whereas it used to be when they were short-staffed, maybe two or three times. The advantage of our kids, there are a number of advantages of them getting out there more often than what they were, and one of them is then our third graders can make an informed decision going into fourth grade. Do I want to be a part of the Prairie Science class, or do I not? And getting out there seven times over the course of their third-grade year is very helpful to that point. Moving into staff development, we had, two Fridays ago, we had a really, really good staff development day. A special thank you to those on the Staff Development Committee who secured so many good speakers. Our staff were able to attend four one-hour-long sessions on various topics and earn four continuing-time clock hours. The renewal process is you need 125 clock hours over a five-year period of time, and you need to meet eight mandatory requirements. So a day like we had two Fridays ago was really helpful and important to staff being able to meet certain mandatory requirements and then pick away at that 125 hours by earning four hours. A little bit about some data review. We recently had what was called Winter Universal Screenings. I want to just explain that a little bit. We do this three times a year, fall, winter, spring. We call it universal because we touch every kid. We screen every kid. And what does it mean when we screen them? We give multiple one-minute assessments such as letter-name fluency. How many letters can you name in a minute, and these letters are upper and lower case, and they're all, they're not in alphabetical order? That's more of a first grade, that's one of five or six first-grade assessments. And then you move into another one-minute timed assessment called nonsense-word fluency. Well, what is a nonsense word? It would be like W-I-J. Can a student look at that three-letter word and say, "W-i-j-wi-j"? That would be an example of a nonsense-word fluency assessment. There's also something called the phoneme segmentation fluency. That's where the student isn't looking at any print, but the teacher is saying the word cage, and now the student has to say back to the teacher, "k-a-j". So that would be an example of phoneme segmentation fluency. There's also oral reading fluency. You read for a minute from a passage. How many words per minute can you read, but how many of those words can you read accurately? So you put all of that together and you get a composite score. And then something that happened this year, which was really neat, our interventionists. So at McKinley, this would have been Courtney Anderson, along with Kathy Smith, along with Renee Strand, sat down and met with every single classroom teacher for 30 minutes to go over the results of all of those screenings. That was helpful, and just all of our classroom teachers really getting to know exactly where their kids are at, how they performed in those screenings, and then which kids might be ready to exit certain services, and then which other kids maybe need to be pulled in to give some extra support. The same thing happened at Adams School. That was again Courtney Anderson as an interventionist because she goes between the two buildings, and she met with Jessica Mulstreet and Terry Aho, and they met then with the 11, actually 12, classroom teachers because we included the special ed teacher as well. So some really good things going on with our screenings and our data review. Real quick, winter math testing begins tomorrow. Actually, there was a class or two that actually started today. They take two days out of the four, one day for reading, one day for math. Each assessment on the computer takes anywhere from maybe 25 to 45 minutes, depending on how fast the steam works. A special thank you to our music teachers at the elementary level, Michelle Danielson, Ruth Umloff, and Mick Larson, for leading, and I know this was over a month ago now, but they led some sing-alongs the day before our winter break began. So we had a lot of fun, and thank you to those skilled people for leading the entire school and the gymnasium through some fun activities. We continue at the elementary schools at McKinley and Adams to recognize students weekly. We call these All-Star Students. McKinley or Adams, All-Star Students. So each Friday, 22 students, 11 on each building, one from each class are recognized for their behavior of being safe, kind, respectful, responsible, and ready to learn, things that we talked a lot about at the elementary school. Students, besides receiving a certificate that they're able to bring home and be very proud of, they are part of a group photo that is then displayed in the hallway. Lastly, I thought I would just talk a little bit, just a little bit, about how we like to approach student behavior at McKinley and Adams. Now you can call these many different things. If there's a conflict, or a disagreement, or an argument, or an annoyance, or a fight. Somebody, some people might refer to it as an act of bullying. I just want to talk about that a little bit. First thing I want to say is, if I ever get a report of two kids that need to sit down with me so that we can work something out, I'm the first to drop everything and address that, no matter how it is being described to me. It could be a simple conflict to be resolved. It could be a disagreement, an argument, an annoyance, a fight, an act of bullying, just to repeat what I said already. Some years ago, I had this happen in my building. I had two kids come to me, classmates, one boy, one girl. Their lockers were next door to each other, and they were both accusing the other one of being a bully. I thought, well, this is interesting. We're going to sit down and we're going to work this out. And what we learned was the girl did not appreciate the noises, the annoying noises, that the boy was making at his locker. But when the girl was telling him to knock it off, the boy didn't appreciate that in the way she was telling him to knock it off. So now we had two kids accusing each other of being a bully. And I thought about that for a while. I thought, you know, something's not quite right here, because when we're talking about a true bullying situation, we're talking about an imbalance of power between two kids, and we're also talking about a repeated event that continues to happen and happen and happen. When I sat down with these two kids, this was quite a simple conflict to resolve. But if the kids are going home and describing that as a bullying situation, then I thought, well, what are we doing wrong here? And we started having discussions as a staff. And we decided that, you know what, kid's six turning seven, and seven turning eight, and eight turning nine. Maybe the word bullying and bullied and bullied isn't quite the right word to use, because then pretty soon, everything was that. A student budging in line at the drinking fountain was all of a sudden bullying or being a bully. And so now we know when kids go home and they tell their parents, "I'm being bullied at school," or so-and-so is a bully, there's an emotional response behind those words. And so whether someone calls me and says, "My child is being bullied," or if they don't and say, "There's somebody that's being mean to my child," I will drop everything. In fact, I enjoy that as part of my job. I really do. And after 19 years, I think I have a pretty good handle of it and a pretty good success rate with it. So as a staff, we just decided, we're not going to use those words anymore. We're just going to talk about being a good friend. We're going to talk about being safe and kind and respectful and responsible. And so now the dirty look across the cafeteria isn't any longer viewed as an act of bullying. Quick story. Two boys were waiting to be seen by me in my office the other day. They had a conflict, a fight on the playground. I was pulled out of the cafeteria to go and visit with the boys, and by the time I got into my office, they said, "Everything's okay, Mr. Colbeck. We have apologized to each other." They were classmates. They got into a little playground scuffle, and I said, "You know, it appears to me that you two guys are going to be okay if I let you go back out on the playground tomorrow." I said, "Is everything going to be okay?" "Everything's going to be fine, Mr. Colbeck. We'll be just fine." And it is. So I could talk to you for hours about what I'm talking with you about right now, but I just wanted to address a little bit how at our level, with our six-and-sevens, seven-and-eights, and eights-and-nines, how we choose to look at that. Again, I'm going to reiterate, it doesn't matter what somebody calls it when they call me. I'm going to treat it the same. And I will say this too, sometimes when someone calls me and they want me to look into a situation, there are times when I look into the situation and learn about the part that a student played in it whose parent called me. Sometimes that student has left certain things out that they choose not to share with a parent. So then I leave it up to that student when we learn the whole story. Hey, would you like to share the rest of the story with mom and dad tonight, or would you like me to? Or do you want to have the first shot at it? And oftentimes, they want to have the first attempt at talking to mom and dad and letting them know their part in it. So oftentimes, when there's a conflict, it's kind of a thing that's going sometimes both ways. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that, and would be happy to come back if you wanted me to expand on anything that I shared with you tonight. And I know I went long, so I apologize for that.
Any questions for Mr. Colbeck?
I just want to have a clarification now, because at the beginning of your report, it almost sounded like you were complaining about staff going on maternity leave. But we all are really excited when people are on maternity leave, right? Because that means more students in our school district.
Well, we were just, I was just tallying in my head what the kindergarten class five years from now is going to be like. Maybe six?
If I'm honest, it's been a challenge. Am I excited for everybody that becomes a new mom? Absolutely. But when we have a shortage of teachers in our world, it puts an extra strain on school districts. And when I have two staff members in my building who were hired to be interventionists and then fill in days that we can't secure substitute teachers, but instead I have to put those people into classrooms to cover maternity leaves, it puts a strain on other parts of the building. And so I have one employee in each building who I wasn't able to use the way that we were hoping to use them because I couldn't find subs to cover, because I needed to find four. I was able to find two and then take the other two and put them in, so...
I understand that, but that is part of the personal life of our staff?
I understand that part too.
Scott, do you use a different word with the kids than bullying then?
We don't use that term.
Right. Do you use a different word though, so like, we could get away from the word bullying?
Well, we are away from the word, because we don't use it at McKinley and Adams with our first, second, third graders. So it might be like, hey, it sounds like you guys are having a disagreement. Let's work this out. Hey, it sounds like we have a conflict here. Let's talk about this. Hey, I noticed that you guys have been arguing about this. Let's do some resolution here.
Anything further for Mr. Colbeck? Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Timmy Lund, elementary principal at Cleveland. Good evening.
Good. Mr. Colbeck did such a nice job of explaining the universal screening that we conduct three times a year, so I'm not going to elaborate too much on that. But at Cleveland, we also completed the universal screening in January, and tomorrow and Thursday this week, we're going to spend some time looking at the data and looking at what students might be ready to exit that program and others that might be needing a boost in reading and math skills. So that's taking place at Cleveland this week, and I just want to thank our RTI interventionists for heading that process up, and that would be Kim Kamroski in math, and Pam Anderson and Addie Scholl with our reading program. So it's time well spent, and teachers are looking forward to receiving that data and those updates. We have ongoing conversation about that throughout the school year, of course, but this is just a time where we pause and take a good look at those measures. We had a special event last week. Cleveland had held a spelling bee last Thursday afternoon and morning and afternoon at the Kennedy Secondary School auditorium. A big thank you to Krista Seymengard for heading that up and coordinating the whole event. A big thank you to Krista Seymgard for heading that up and coordinating that whole event. We had fourteen fourth grade participants and eighteen fifth grade participants. And so congratulations to all of those students for demonstrating confidence and the courage to compete in front of their classes and parents and families. They did an outstanding job and they're top-notch spellers. I had the privilege of being a judge, and I was glad that I was in the judge's seat and not at the microphone spelling words without being able to write them down. But our fourth grade champion was Nolan Swenson, and the runner-up, fourth grade runner-up was Aiden Holgwood. And our fifth grade champion was Truman Steinbrenner, and the runner-up, Elias Cotterby. So they all appreciated that event and were encouraging to one another, and you saw pats on the backs and smiles too, so it's a great event, and the students look forward to that. And then at Cleveland, we have a character education program that we implemented last year, and since the same student body stayed at Cleveland, just, you know, became fourth and fifth graders, we have been, had a committee that has worked this fall to be adjusting that plan a little bit, adding some things, tweaking, meeting the garden, and then developing it into a two-year program, so that we can implement it over the course of two years with students as they come through the building. And we've really been implementing this now in January, and our themes in January have been fairness and equity. We had a lesson that everybody did on Martin Luther King Day last Monday, and prior to that, there was an activity that really talked about what's fair, what does fairness mean, and what's fair for one person might not be fair for another one, and just really recognizing some of the differences that people have, and how does life become fair for each individual. So teachers are doing a nice job of carrying out, you know, at least two lessons each month, some might have an activity, some might have a book, but it's variety, nice variety. In February, our theme is respect, and I didn't bring the examples of what we're doing, but also in February, we always have Friendship Fridays in February, where the students will get to dress up, and so we'll have, you know, Making Friends is No Sweat, wear your favorite sweats to school, or Hats Off to Making Friends, and it's Hat Day. So we have some different themes that the kids really like to carry out. And as I kind of reflect, each year at this time, we have nine and ten-year-old students in the building, and they are at that age where they are really learning how to make and keep friends. And they're experiencing that that circle of friends that started out really small as young children is starting to grow and grow with the activities that they're becoming involved in. Some friends they keep longer than others, some are classmates, friendly classmates for a year, and then that shifts in the elementary level. So some kids really have a hard time sharing friends, and if my good friend sits with somebody else at lunch, or plays with somebody else at recess, they might be a little heartbroken about that. And so we do a lot of talking about friendship and relationships and how to foster all of them and how to share friends, so it's perfect. February is a great month for all of these things to happen. February is also American Heart Health Month, and so our FIAA teachers do a really nice job of bringing heart health awareness to our students and doing some further talking in FIAA class about that. And then the FIAA teachers also join forces with the American Heart Association, and students become part of some fundraising efforts to support the work of the American Heart Association. So that is also taking place this, the first week in February. And then I just kind of excited to share with you what's going on at Prairie Wetlands Learning Center with our Prairie Science classes. For the next several weeks, they have a speaker lined up, employees with the Fish and Wildlife Service, or those environmental government agencies, coming in and either sharing about their career and what they get to do in their career, or bringing a piece of really cool important equipment that they use, and talking with the students about that piece of equipment and how it's used. But just those opportunities to pull in some guest speakers that are just right at their learning level, and they get to learn about what opportunities are there in that line of work or in that field. So that's really cool. With the recent cold temperatures, they solidified the ice depth of those wetlands, and so there's some really nice spots for kids to go out, use the snowshoes, ski shoes, do some cross-country skiing, so the classes have had opportunities to get out on those pieces of equipment as well. And there's lots of muskrat pop-ups here and there on the wetlands. So this week, they're also doing a study on muskrats, and what they're doing under the ice, and what those burrows look like, and they need to, under the water to get to that burrow that has some warmth and security and safety for them. So they're studying muskrats this week as well, so lots of cool things that are taking place at the Prairie. And then lastly, our Otter PTO sponsors a grade level event for each of the grade levels at kindergarten through fifth grade. And so fifth grade is, our Otter PTO is sponsoring fifth grade now that they are back at that elementary level, and fifth grade teachers have been doing some exploring and seeking out what might be a really neat experience for them. And they've planned to go tubing at Detroit Mountain in February. So February 20th and 21st, four groups will go on one of those days and the other four on the next, so they are going to be able to have a tubing experience at Detroit Mountain. So looking forward to that. And with that, I can conclude my report for the evening.
Any questions or comments for Principal Rod?
Thank you.
Mark, thank you. We'll hear now from Ivan, middle school principal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We started quarter three last Monday, and we're the only school that's still on the quarters, and we like it that way, so don't ask us to change, please. Why I say about quarter three started is because when I got here, one of the things I was tasked with is that our students were constantly changing their core teachers, and we feel like we mostly rectified that. So students might change in grades seven, eight, they might change their core teachers between second and third quarter, but they won't change first and second, or third and fourth. We'll have the outliers that will come from time to time, but we really value relationships, and hopefully, relationships are super valuable, and there's a connection between student and teacher so that they can work together in the educational process. But every now and again, there's a conflict, and that's when those changes at the semester time will come. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. We work hard to ensure that switching only occurs between quarter two and quarter three, so I wanted to bring that up. Again, between quarter two and quarter three is the mid-year of the school year, so we have our winter screenings. You heard about that from Mr. Kolbeck as well, with Chad, Kep, and Addie Scholl complete universal screenings in the areas of reading and math to all sixth grade students. Their test scores are reviewed and compared against previous testing to help determine if intervention is appropriate. So thank you to them for their work. We've had a couple of big events. The first one I want to talk about is the Middle School Knowledge Bowl. They had three meets last fall, Claire Stich was the advisor, and we had eleven students that participated in three separate meets. Knowledge Bowl, Middle School Knowledge Bowl is a combination of fast facts, whole knowledge, math calculation, and quick buzzer fingers. Our teams are well-rounded, and the competition was only second to the camaraderie of the students. This is from Miss Stich. This year's motto was, "You Plum Bums," the Latin word for lead, which kids thought that was great. Overall, the season ended well, and they're retaining about the same numbers as they have in the past, and we're really happy to offer that non-athletic opportunity for our students. So thank you to Ms. Stich for her work with the Middle School Knowledge Bowl. A few weeks ago, we also held the Middle School Spelling Bee. We're one big group, so students in grades six, seven, and eight take a pre-test, and they are invited to participate in the spelling bee, and not everyone displays the courage and desire to get up in front of everybody in an event like that. We had twenty-six students, I think it was twenty-six students participate this year, and we had a sixth grader, Eli Schlosser, won the competition. And then Jacob Warner, he's an eighth grader, he got second. And he took that pretty well. He won the regional last year, if you recall, and went to Washington DC right around that June first time. So he took it, he's, hey, I got where I wanted to get, and he was happy about that. And he was, I know Timmy complimented the kids, all high-fiving and all, it was really, it's just fantastic. So the Regional Competition, Lakes Country, on February 11th. Bailey McKinney ran the spelling bee for us this year, so I appreciate her organization and just tackling that project. Another big event we have is tomorrow, we're having a motivational speaker. We're fortunate to partner with Life Church and Pastor Nick Preston, and he's bringing in Bob Lenz, who will present the Dignity Pledge, L-E-M-Z, Dignity Pledge, you can find that easily online. Bob is going to present Living Life to the fullest. Everyone faces tough struggles and hard questions, and he works, the program will highlight three ideals that can help conflict resolution and improving relationships. Number one, value, each person is valuable and has tremendous worth. Courage, each person can say no to destructive choices and have courage to stand up for what's right. And the last talking point tomorrow is respect, we respect each other without building walls of division. So we're excited to hear that. We did a short intro for our kids in advisory and homerooms today, so kids knew what to expect, and then we'll do some follow-up work with them as well, signing a poster, I believe is part of it. So kids are going to agree to have value, show courage, and be respectful. That can be a great message. Middle School attendance, mid-year and the quarter two, it's a good time to just review attendance. Remember, our school district goal is ninety-five percent attendance, that's like missing two days in a quarter, and a quarter usually is about forty, forty-one, forty-two days. Two days in a quarter, ninety-five percent attendance. And I'll share this with Mr. Drake, so he can send this out to you. Overall, in quarter one, ninety-five percent attendance, we had sixty-two point eight percent. Quarter one, sixty-two point eight percent, ninety-five percent attendance. And it dropped to fifty-seven point one in quarter two, which should be no surprise. Illness has hit our community, the nurses station, the nurses' office at KSS is not somewhere you want to visit for fun, okay? You do not want to go there, you will get something. Ninety percent attendance is another, that's missing one day every two weeks, ninety percent attendance. In quarter one, it was eighty-six point three, and in quarter two, it's eighty-two point four. So about a four percent drop from quarter one to quarter two, and I think that makes sense, like I said, with illness, I think that makes sense. So we continue to work hard on our attendance in our school. Lynn Johnson, which you'll probably hear a little bit more about with Mr. Drake's report, has worked hard, keeps great records, follows up with people. We are doing the same at the building level and then passing those along to Lynn as well. The last thing I'd like to talk about is our sixth graders. Ms. Weldy brought a group of sixth graders down to the MSBA Winter Convention. They presented their Minnesota Mini Museums. Students displayed and answered questions about their project, really great positive event for those students, and, you know, for Mrs. Weldy too. She really is a great teacher, really loves the project-based learning stuff, and that's exactly what this is. You guys take it where you want to take it, really, really wonderful. And you can't drive all the way to the cities without stopping at a museum, because that's what Ms. Weldy would want to do. So they stopped at the Minnesota History Center, I'm just going to read this briefly, they spent time in our home, native Minnesota, then they learned about Them Now Wow, where they took part in hands-on activities about the mining industry, the Greatest Generation World War II in post-Minnesota, which they're going to learn all about this spring in Minnesota history, and the current traveling Smithsonian exhibit, Girlhood, It's Complicated. There, they interacted with the History Center educator who led them on a great discussion on school policy and clothing choice, and also included a section on women's basketball. A great experience for everyone, really great trip. That concludes my report for the season.
Any questions for Mr. first? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last principal to report is Mark Anderson, High School, ALC, IQ Academy principal.
Good evening, how is everybody doing tonight?
Good.
All right, to start off with the ALC, we had the opportunity to work with the AmeriCorps Promise Fellow Grant, and we were able to get someone, we wanted everybody at the ALC High School and Middle School to get it. We had the opportunity, and Mr. Hurst and I and Ms. Johnson talked, and we felt the ALC was in the most need. So DJ will be the Promise Fellow there, he will start in a couple of weeks at the ALC. He's looking to work with thirty kids, which is about thirty-five hours a week, so he'll be there, tell about four o'clock, I think he's going to go from nine to four. He'll work one-on-one with students, small groups, just a good opportunity for him to meet, build relationships, build trust with students, to talk about getting kids to school, attendance, and just anything that's going on in their life, and supporting them and then giving them the resources to go in the right direction, to get the right support that they need moving forward. We're really excited to have that. February 3rd through the 5th, the annual math conference for staff, we are sending four of them, Mr. Rodriguez, are you one of them? He is going, yeah, I figured so. And MAPS stands for Minnesota Association of Alternative Programming. The staff goes, in third trimester, Mr. Johnson, the English teacher runs a class for the MAPS program, and the kids are working really hard on those opportunities. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, one of the chair of the MAPS for the kids is from the ALC again, right? Two years in a row. And the current enrollment at the ALC is eighty-six students. We really try to stay right at that number. You might sneak it up a little bit, around third trimester for seniors, we need a little additional support and push to make it to graduation. The IQ Academy has been extremely busy this year. Mr. Johnson and Ms. Nancy Reard have had the opportunity to hire another special education teacher, his enrollment continues to grow. Emily Corin will be starting on February 3rd. They started trimester two, they were at nine hundred and sixty-eight kids, and he has about eighty more kids waiting to get in and register and be part of the IQ Academy. He thought they might be up around thousand, twenty kids here in the next couple of weeks. He and I just visited a couple of weeks ago, and we're wondering if we'll get to twelve hundred kids or not this year, which is interesting, because I think you've talked about it, Mr. Drake, that we may have a thousand kids, but we probably have four hundred who have come in and left, so that's a circle of kids always coming in and going, so pretty hectic for teachers. So we're excited to go with the numbers, it's nice to see them, but I know that they put in a lot of work for them. They have a social activity February 14th in ice skating arena over here at Roosevelt from ten to eleven-thirty, so if you feel like skating with the IQ kids, grab some skates and join them. They'll be over there for an hour and a half, and enjoying that. We had a pretty good opportunity last time in the spring when they came, and we're looking forward to some of the numbers being the same as we had in the past. Some updates, one of the things I wanted to talk about, all three schools, the High School, ALC, and IQ, all had training in this space with Gareth Larson. He is a PLC leader, he's a very good trainer of academics and school initiatives. Each department was sat together here and worked through the process. The staff worked through September and then October, finalizing their number-one goal, problem, and then defining it, and then going out, getting research, and now are implementing best practices to engage students in content at the highest levels. Some of them are in reading, some of them are in math, some of them are cross-curricular opportunities. So they've done a really nice job, they've worked really hard, and a few departments are actually on problem number two. When you finish a problem, you don't put it away and not do it anymore, you continue that practice because it's working, but then you go to problem two, that you're working through, the next thing that you can build opportunities for kids in the classroom. One of the other things that we have done also, this last Staff Development Committee, our Staff Development Day, high school staff, a large number of them went to reading across content, or reading in content, so it's part of our strategic goal for us. And then we also had a staff training on one of the days when we had, it was the end of the first quarter, and we did annotation of text, which is, you have to read and highlight and take notes. It's a really good way to actually read, and then also then write questions that go along with what you're reading about, to either be able to answer or ask questions. It's a really great practice when you do the ACT test. Our SAT team at the high school meets every Tuesday, and one of the things that we've really focused on and we're really good about is, when we have our list of students that come from staff, counselors, administration, maybe a parent has called and asked about certain things, we have a document, we list the student, we talk about them. One of the things that we really focused on is, we have students that need an intervention, but a lot of times a parent or student asks for a 504, and we have never tried the intervention, and you put a... and you put an intervention on a document, what if it doesn't work? So, now you gotta go back and redo that. So, instead of jumping to the 504 right away, we have worked with the counselors to connect with the teachers on, we're gonna try a couple, we're gonna try this intervention and we're gonna run it for about six weeks if it works and then we'll talk about adding it to a 504, or is it just something that we should be doing for the students? So, we have those conversations. We also have the opportunity at the high school for, sometimes we'll get requests for testing of special ed kids and one of the things we try to do then too is, what is the, what is the concern, what is the area that we need to focus on and can we try an intervention first? And maybe it's a 504 piece instead of having the testing piece for IEP and go down that direction and use those best practices. And if they don't work, then we go to the next step, which is usually an evaluation in special education. So, we've worked really hard on that this year and we review the student multiple times, so we've had them on, we talk about them again the next week and then the staff brings them back and checks in on how they're doing, so we know if the intervention is working or not. We also have some attendance things. What we have done is a little bit different at the high school, we just gave everybody a hundred percent attendance to start the year out. Everybody had ninety-five percent attendance or better to start the year. So, through December, we were doing all right, but we were really close. We, if a kid has ten or less days of being excused from school or unexcused, they're part of the ninety-five percent. Once they get to eleven, they, they get counted as not being part of the ninety-five percent. There were a lot of kids close to the ten with what Mr. Hurst said, is we had some illness in early January and we're fighting that battle right now also. But here are the percentages, we have our seniors, eighty percent of our seniors have ninety-five percent attendance, which will go down, like I said, because we were really close right before break and now that we're getting into January, we already know that we've had a lot of students sick and out. Juniors are at eighty-nine percent of ninety-five percent attendance, sophomores are at eighty percent and freshmen are at ninety-five percent. Again, we'll run that information again in January, we hang it in the hallway, in the foyer area for the students to see and share with staff. One of the things that we benefit from is be able to participate in any activities, you have to be in school for the full day. You can go to a doctor's appointment and things like that, bring notes back, but that, making sure that we follow that has been really good for us. First trimester, we handed out to our otter time teachers about fifteen to sixteen Perfect Attendance Awards for kids who were in school every day during trimester one. And at our last staff meeting, I was able to hand out twelve staff member Perfect Attendance for our high school staff, both in, in the building and in the classrooms. Our students have signed up for the ACT or ASAB testing, so the counselors had a meeting with them and then I went in and had another opportunity to speak to them about what's the difference between those tests. What's your plan after high school? Are you going into a career or college? Which test should you be thinking about taking? And we, they can take it as a junior, senior, sometimes the kids are, look to do the ASAB to get some more of their career knowledge and then as a senior, they want to take the ACT. We really talked about the kids, if you're going to a four-year school, you need to take the ACT, but if you're not, you really need to think about what the program and what your plan after high school is, so they're taking the right assessment. And we've had that conversation with them twice. They'll be taking that assessment in April, on April eighth. Currently, our curriculum in the ELA actually has some test prep for ACT built in the, in the content curriculum. Our math department, one of our teachers is gonna run ACT prep in March, closer to the, the testing time. And then Mary here down at Community Ed has set up an opportunity in February for our students to come in and do test prep with someone who is really good and we have encouraged our students, if they're interested in scoring well on the ACT, to come down and do that as another additional opportunity to gain those skills. We continue to work with our students and, students to treat staff and peers respectfully. Our freshmen have come in with a lot of energy and excitement, so we've had to have a few conversations about expectations and cultures. So, we have a few more referrals in our ninth grade this year than we, than we did last year, but it's an opportunity for us to actually sit down and have some conversations with them and go through some opportunity of skill building for them on what some expectations and how behaviors and things should be working in the building. Mr. Tilke and I are not big fans of suspensions, if we don't have to, we try to work through those things and keeping them in the building and having a restorative conversation with them on how we can be better and maybe go work with an adult and stay, stay engaged in an on-tasking class. The big thing for the high school is coming up here February fourth and sixth. High school's been working on registration since we got back from winter break. We took the first two days and just let the kids come back and wake back up and then the next week, second week of January, we've been working on registration. So, our staff and counselors have worked really hard and I appreciate the work they have done. Every week, the students are asked to do something related to registration in January. Students have worked, they started out with counselors that first week back, they got their folders and their packets of what to expect, new classes, classes they need to have for requirements. They have also had the opportunity to go through their credit inventory. We made a digital copy this year because what kids like to do with paper ones when they're done with them is throw them away. So, now they have their digital one and when counselors meet with the kids, they can actually review their credit inventories, make sure they both have the same information. And students then also know what they've passed, what they may not, they may have to retake and kind of put a plan together. We also have the outer pathways that we have students looking through to see what courses are offered. If a student's interested in human services, what are the careers and pathways that they can use for a career or college? What colleges are around here, cost of colleges? And then they also have the opportunity to look at what you can get paid if you go into human services and specific jobs. All part of our PLP, which is a personal learning plan, which the district has had for about six years. And this year, the state implemented that for ninth grade, so all ninth graders moving, all high school kids moving forward per state have to do that. Our counselors have been opening up their schedules, we've had a lot of kids in the counseling office over the last couple of weeks, talking to counselors about NCAA eligibility requirements because they're interested in playing an activity in college and just talking about what their plans for career in college readiness is for after graduation. One of the other opportunities we've had is we, February fourth and sixth, the students will come in and register in their otter time classes with the teachers as they finalize that on Monday or the day of their registration. Teachers are in contact with parents about having those meetings set up. And we did something to our seniors this year that, that they're excited about, we're asking them to come in and actually present a presentation to their otter time teacher and parents about what their plans after high school are for. Student in a career, we're trying to figure out, what do you want to do? Where are you living? Do you have enough money to live there? Are you living at home? All the things that go into, all that type of stuff. Retirement, where are you putting your money? 401Ks, 403Bs, having those type of opportunities is, are you doing a gap year? Military. Our college kids are coming in also with that piece and they're talking about what colleges they've chosen or are going to choose, what's the cost, who's paying for it, how many scholarships are you writing for? All those type of things. When are due dates of certain payments that have to be made? A lot of things the parents ask us and we just feel that it's important for them to be part of that. Sometimes kids just assume mom and dad are okay paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go to school and then mom and dad find out, if you make your kid write for scholarships, you could probably pay fifty grand to send them instead. So, we're working on those pieces, which is important for us and makes sure parents know about. So, our senior otter time teachers will be having those conversations. We do have nineteen PSEO students who will be meeting with me and their parents about their plans for after high school because they're not in an otter time, so they put them in my otter time. So, I will be meeting with them and I'm excited because some of them have shown me some of the work they've done. I have met last week with the eighth grade students during a period, last Thursday, opportunity to talk about expectations and culture at the high school along with registration. Got through my presentation and spent another twenty minutes talking about all the questions they had about coming to the high school and, and what credits are. They do know that you need fifty-six credits to graduate from the high school though, so we did learn something that day. And I will be meeting with parents of eighth graders next week at six fifteen in the auditorium to have a very similar conversation and I'm guessing I'll have some of the same questions, but some of the other questions will be different from that. Also, I have made a ton of videos to put on our registration website, so when, anything we send out is in both presentation form and in video form, so they can watch it and hear a little more in-depth conversation. And that's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions?
Can we come watch those presentations?
Absolutely, you're welcome, six fifteen on the fourth.
All right, thank you. And now, a report from superintendent.
Well, good evening. First, we'll start out with some thank yous. And last week was parent professional recognition week and certainly want to give my heartfelt appreciation for all the work that they do. Parent professionals wear many, many hats to students and they can switch hats on a moment's notice depending on what the students need, needs are. Sometimes they are a coach, a mentor, a friend, maybe a taskmaster, sometimes a disciplinarian, sometimes a surrogate parent. But those relationships and those bonds that they form with our students are really, really strong and they are, some of the glue that really connects and binds our students to our school district and those are lifelong relationships that are formed with our kids. So, appreciate the strong role they play in supporting education and the relationship building that they engage in on a daily basis with our kids. Want to just do a general thanks to all of our staff. Every school year has its own unique challenges, but we really have had a great first half of the school year so far, so appreciate everyone's hard work and it's just been a very positive climate and culture in the district and appreciate everyone's hard work. In the district office, special thanks to Elaine, who's been working really hard, putting a lot of extra time in to make sure that the upcoming transition in HR Director goes very smoothly in the district, so I appreciate that. Renee has really been putting tons and tons of hours and her staff on working on the upcoming fiscal year twenty-six budget, so we will be meeting as a finance committee and then as a board to talk about what that means and I'll go over that a little bit later somewhat challenges. And then, special recognition to Sherri Smith in preparing all the W-2s, et cetera. It is tax filing season, I think today was the official start of days when you could file your taxes. So, appreciate all their hard work. Assistance moving the board meeting to Community Ed. I don't know if this looks simple or not, but there are a lot of moving parts to this and so really appreciate everyone's efforts from Mary and Amy with the space. Roy Anderson came over and set up the, the sound technology. Mike and I had a conversation last week about what changes might be necessary in the space if we're going to hold our board meetings here permanently. And then Ryan Johnson helped problem solve a technical glitch today with the monitors, so appreciate that. Looking forward to after this meeting, maybe some pros and cons of what the experience was like tonight and if we, this is more inviting certainly for our public with more room to come in and participate in school district news and decisions. And that's why we're here and then just talk about if this will be our permanent location, how do we make this maybe set up a little bit more user-friendly, et cetera. And then I just want to give some thanks to some folks that helped out with OLV's situation here, unfortunate with the situation in their facility. But on that day, Mr. Tilke and Mr. Abrahams were able to problem solve with them and we did some temporary housing of their students in the Otter Gym, Roosevelt Gym Field House, so appreciate that. Lance Wells and the food service staff have been working with them to deliver meals while they're out, out at the NAS. And then Ed Shea and the mechanical department also have, was kind of fortunate in the timing. We had a spare cooler because we just received some new units and we moved out one of those to the NAS on a temporary basis to help them with their food. So, just appreciative of all the extra work they do, it's just a good reminder that we live in a small town and we help each other out as we can. I want to go over just an update on district goals and there's a lot here, but goal number one was otter preschool students will meet all kindergarten readiness goals. You'll see that these start with fostering independence and autonomy, so we're growing the students' confidence, exposing them to lots of new situations, getting them used to having choices and weighing the, the pros and cons of the various decisions that they may make. And then we also focus on early literacy and early numeracy, so listening to stories, interacting with books, developing that number sense in all kinds of different contexts, looking at the date of the calendar, looking at the time on the clocks, all of those basic skills that help prepare that foundation to be successful in kindergarten. The social skills are huge. I have an opportunity right now, the high school staff is also doing it on a voluntary basis, but the area superintendents are reading a book called The Anxious Generation and I have not finished it yet, but it's really fascinating, the content in that book. But just talking about in particular, the era of the smartphone and how that has changed, how students interact with, with each other as peers. It has, most of the people in this room that are of my vintage would say we're fortunate to have survived childhood with some of the things that we did. But today's children, there were things that we learned and ways that we grew by making mistakes and engaging in some at least moderately risky decision-making at times. That's not necessarily the case of, of some of the new generation and the book is pointing out that that has, can have repercussions on how they're equipped to deal with life's inevitable challenges and struggles as they reach adolescence and adulthood, excuse me. So, all those things, learning to deal with frustration, learning to address your feelings of anger, sadness, all very much part of, part of growing up and a play-based kind of educational philosophy. And again, we use strategies to support students' ability to make decisions while also working with them on the consequences of their decision. So, that's really been integral in preparing our students to be successful kindergartners. The other thing that's really been evident is that having the preschool staff and the kindergarten staff housed in the same building is a huge plus for us. And not only that, I will go one level deeper in having most, if not all, of the special ed early interventionists for those youngest children housed in that building is a huge, huge plus for us. As students struggle, we have the resources on hand where we can do the intervention very early on when it is proven by research to be most effective and we're seeing really, really good results as Principal Stein, Breder, mentioned earlier. Goal number two, achieving grade level literacy for all students, and we've been working on this now for a couple of years. We have the Read App training going on right now, of course, that's mandated by the state, but prior to that, we had already made a decision to implement Hagerty and Ufly as part of our reading instructional program. In recent years, both the elementary and the high school have adopted new language arts curriculum. Principal Anderson mentioned this earlier, but the standards alignment work that's being done over the past couple of years in the PLCs to make sure that we are aligning our standards, our instruction with the standards and then that we also are guaranteeing certain core standards that are just our foundation of instruction in the district. We repurposed Title I dollars to add an additional licensed teacher and that was, Principal Collette mentioned that, down in kindergarten. We also added an AdSIS position for the youngest children as well in efforts to really just put those heavy resources in when the kids are young to make sure that we get them right back on track as quickly as we can. And then also was mentioned tonight, the winter benchmarking and screening with the title interventionists in those face-to-face meetings to go over the results with the classroom teachers. So, that's all related to goal number two. Goal number three, you heard some attendance tonight. There are multiple ways of, of talking about attendance and so depending on which format, the data could be a little bit different. My thanks to Lynn Johnson for these figures today, so this is hot off the presses. One thing that I do need to share with you is One thing that I do need to share with you is that these results, and this was intentional, do not include verified absences due to illness. So if there was a doctor's note, I did not have that included on those attendance figures. But you can see Lincoln School, this will be no surprise, the younger the students, the higher the average daily rate of attendance. And then as we go through our system, you can see that through Adams, so through third grade, it's really, really high. And then you start to see the numbers once they hit fourth and fifth grade. If you look at that 89.9 to 80%, you see that spike up from a 19 to a 54. So as the students get a little bit older, the attendance is a little tougher to keep up there at our, at our goal. Then as you look at the middle school, 95% and higher, and then the other bands, you can see where things are at there. And then moving into the high school where the challenges get greater, students have more freedom when they get their driver's licenses as typically as sophomores. That's another line of freedom that they have again. And so as they get older, sometimes those habits of daily attendance just start to wane a little bit. But one of the district's big philosophies was taking that attendance position that Lynn Johnson is in and making it full-time, which I think was a very, very good move on the part of the district. And she works really, really hard to stay on top of this and has a really solid working relationship with the county, with the camp meetings, et cetera. So that's our intervention in addition to recognizing students for good attendance, which was mentioned earlier tonight. Then when you get into the ALC, you see again the attendance. One of the tougher areas is our ALC population. And many of these students would have other home life challenges that they are dealing with and various other concerns that can affect their daily attendance as well. So that's a quick snapshot of our attendance goal. District goal number four, improve student behavior. We have social emotional learning or character education, et cetera. There are class meetings where our climate and culture and expectations of how we treat one another are addressed by the principals with our students. There are weekly recognitions for students that are being good role models and conducting themselves as we would want them to. And then there's a whole host of things, conflict resolution. And Principal Kolbeck really kind of walked the board through tonight, the approach that's common among our principals in helping problem solve, helping work through, students work through disagreements, et cetera, building those lifelong skills. We have restrictive procedures, big reduction in the use of restrictive procedures this year. And that includes some special training on how to deflect strikes and even more, well, that's really important to try to reduce the amount of staff that are injured with violent behavior, but also just using those de-escalation techniques to try to get kids calmed down before they would become physically aggressive. And then ongoing social skills training with our special ed students, zones of regulation that we work with even our younger students, especially helping them monitor where they're at emotionally and helping them get back on track with their self-regulation. This I found interesting, so I mentioned a little bit about the anxious generation and really a lot of concern pointed to this era of the smartphone and how that impacts kids in their social relationships. You can see that these are states that have policies in place or legislation introduced that would either ban or have levels of restriction on the use of cell phones in schools. Budget. I mentioned this in an admin meeting this morning. If the state could come up with a more convoluted way of trying to develop school budgets, I don't know how they could make it any worse than it is now. One of the challenges, especially when we're in a budget year like we are now legislatively, is we are making fiscal decisions before we even know what our revenue is going to be, before we have a clear indication in some cases of what our expenditures are going to be. So these are some of the things that, that we have to do our best guesses on as we develop this budget and make staffing decisions in the spring. One of the most important ones is estimating our enrollment. For the most part, brick and mortar, this is fairly straightforward, but it's pretty tricky with IQ because IQ, as Principal Anderson mentioned earlier, has huge swings and in-and-outs throughout the year. And so I will comment just briefly. In the peak of the pandemic, we capped our enrollment in IQ at 1,000 students. That's all we had the staff to serve at that point. Right now, you know, we could be anywhere over 1,000 to 1,200 students in IQ before the end of, before cutoff date later in the spring. So that holds some special challenges for us on enrollment estimation for next September. We don't know what our general education formula increase is going to be. For every 1% on the general ed formula, for us, that equates to about $200,000 in revenue. So the difference between a 2% formula increase and a 4% formula increase is $400,000. That's a lot of revenue that you don't know, are you giving it or not? We have to make estimates on what it's going to cost us to settle our contracts. Will the state continue to fund unemployment insurance? If the state does not continue to fund unemployment insurance, and right now the guarantees we've been given run out this summer, that's $240,000 a year that will come out of our existing budget to maintain that. Will we be able to split the cost of paid family leave? Right now, paid family leave will come, become a requirement of the district in January of 2026. If we were to cover 50% of it and the other 50% would be passed on to our employees, that's still $115,000 of new expenditures to the district based on legislation. And then finally is compensatory revenue. So compensatory revenue is driven by our students that are receiving educational benefits. And when there wasn't universal free breakfast and free lunch, families needed to fill out the educational benefits application. And, and then there was also some direct certification and then that number, percentage of your students that qualified drove your compensatory revenue, which is really dollars devoted to helping students increase basic skills in reading, math. Now that there are free breakfast and lunch, the incentive for parents to fill out the paperwork no longer exists or exists a little bit on the co-curricular side with the sliding participation scale. So as you look at districts throughout the state, with the governor's latest proposal, many districts would receive a significant reduction in revenue projected on their compensatory funds moving forward. So all that to say, it's just really, really difficult because of the nature of the system to make some of these budget decisions, but we have no choice. We have to make some assumptions leading up to a budget here in the next few weeks rolling into April where we finalize staffing decisions for fiscal year 26. Student accomplishments. So congratulations to the one at play for placing first in the North subsection competition. We host the section competition this Thursday, the 30th, in the Fergus Falls High School Auditorium. I believe those performances are open to the public if you would like to come and watch. Our particular play is called Radium Girls, which is really kind of a fascinating study of a period of history, tragic as it was, but it has to do with female factory workers who were painting watch dials, I believe, or the hands on watches using a paint that was irradiated. And then they would lick the brushes to get a finer point on them and were, receive radiation poisoning. And so really a topic of historical significance. The result of that led to some labor law changes and rightfully so. Then celebration for Jacob Broning, who has 15 minutes, so congratulations to Jacob. School events, this is snowball week, so congratulations to the Snowball royalty. We have coronation and talent show today in the auditorium this afternoon. You can see the various dress-up days through the rest of the week and pretty good weather. So we're thankful for that. Some of the things are opportunities to go outside. With student learning, I'll finish up with a couple of things there. The middle school REACH students are putting some posters up in the hallway. They are positive, self-affirming kinds of messages to our student body. And then Ms. Jessica's kindergarten class does that doctor unit every year where they dress up as doctors and they go to various stations and they are fixing words and sentences and numbers, et cetera. And it is really one of the most creative lessons that I have seen a teacher deliver. She just does a fantastic job with that and certainly the students are very well-engaged. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So thank you. All right, we will continue our agenda and now move to the general consent items. For consideration of approval in this motion would be minutes of our reorganizational school board meeting and the regular school board meeting we held on January 13th. And then bills, and so I will turn to Jenny for a report on bills.
Yes, I do want to thank both Renee and Stephen for walking me through this for the first time on my own. So looking at the bills, a couple of things that were just of note, on page one, you can see at the top, we had two larger bills coming from the IQ Academy. Just pointing out that that's for like the software, the tech, the curriculum, that sort of stuff that comes out there. We also had some different purchases from Amazon of note, one of which were the filters for the water filling stations. Yep, so that was a $459 purchase there. Also, sorry, if we, sorry, my bad, if we can go back to the beginning for Fund Six, the building construction, most of that is coming from the Lincoln Project as well as the Broken Water Main. And it is, Renee did mention that we're estimating about another $193,000 that'll be coming from the Lincoln Project that is still being billed to us. And then of note as well, on page 11 and page 22 of our bills, there are funds coming out of, essentially we are the fiscal hosts for the Title IV programs for both OLV and CoPress. So those bills, we will be reimbursed from the Minnesota Department of Education for that, so that was fun to learn that we also do that. You can see too that we had some REACH in coolers that were purchased for the food service and it was mentioned that we will have more of those kinds of purchases coming out of the food service fund because they restructured the way that food service funds can be used and it can be used for equipment now, as long as it, I think it's three years, as long as it's been sitting there for three years. So we might see a few more of those kind of larger purchases coming out of that fund. Also, on page 24, we did have $4,000 worth of repairs done to our driver's ed vehicle, but otherwise everything else looked normal.
Great, thank you. And personnel updates, then we'll turn to Elaine Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone. Some items that I have here on your certified staff hires. Emily Corrin, IQ Special Education Teacher, she is a brand new teacher. We've just had an increase in enrollment with an increase of needs for students with disabilities, so we should be taking care of that role. Wendy Campbell, she is a current IQ teacher, I believe a second grade teacher with us. She has a contract to increase, just again due to increase in enrollment. And then Caleb Anderson, business teacher at KSS, and he is currently then doing long-term subbing and will be hiring him for the rest of the school year here. And then sports staff hires, Nicholas Solan, custodian at Kennedy Secondary School, Nanny Grace Bellem, preschool ECE classroom assistant, and Timothy Rosten, long-term, part-time substitute custodian. Coach resignation, we have Matt Gallowhead, golf coach. And then coach hired is Carrie Trupka, she will be taking head of the bowling coach position starting this spring. So I would recommend those four.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? Hearing not all in favor of approving the general consent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved. We do not have old business, we'll move on to new business, which begins with a resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. And before I launch into the content, this is an annual resolution that enables the administration to begin looking at the budget and making necessary cuts if, if it's needed. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures, whereas this reduction in expenditure may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in effecting discontinuance of positions, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 544 as follows, that the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district, reduce expenditures, and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs and curtailment of programs. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I will move for that resolution.
All right, and is there a second?
I'll second, then.
All right. And as the superintendent, as a commentary, as the superintendent said in his, his report just now, we're making cuts because we don't know what money we're getting. And so the many years of school board experience, we let staff know that they might not have a job and that's devastating and then, oh, if the money comes through, then we, then we put, put them back on the, on the contractor. We don't actually let them go. So it's just, it's a discombobulated system, I guess is probably a technical way to describe that.
There's another way too, sorry.
Okay. So that's my comment. Any questions or other discussion before we vote on the resolution? Okay, clerk?
Steven Vingston.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Kelly Graff.
Yes.
Jenny Christian.
Yes.
Steve Herman.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. In our packet before tonight, we got fundraising activity requests scheduled between the first of this year and the 30th of this year. I would entertain a motion to approve the fundraising request. And is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on fundraising activity requests? 19 requests were made and the support or the staff needs to detail a little bit of what the money will be utilized for and how much they intend to raise. Any, no one else with any commentary? All in favor of approving the fundraising request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved. And a week late, but not And a week late, but not a dollar short, or something like that, is the governor's proclamation on paraprofessional recognition week. So this did occur, this was last week, but the timing was off for the board. We still don't want to overlook it. As the superintendent noted, the paraprofessionals are the glue in our school. The proclamation reads like this, whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals, we provide multiple services in our schools that are integral to the success of students and their teachers. And whereas paraprofessionals take on a wide range of responsibilities to meet the unique needs of the students in their care, the dedication supports safe, effective, and engaging learning environments throughout Minnesota. And whereas Minnesota's Department of Education is committed to excellence in education and recognizes the important role that paraprofessionals play in ensuring success in our schools. And whereas Minnesota celebrates that essential contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Week. Now therefore, I, well, Tim Walz declared it, so I'll just fill it in like I'm him. I, Tim Walz, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim January 20th to 26th, 2025, as Paraprofessional Recognition Week in the state of Minnesota. Would someone offer that resolution for this proclamation?
I will.
All right. And a second?
A second.
Okay, we'll take Ellie on that.
Okay.
Second, and any other, any discussion on this? Take away clerk.
Okay, Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Stephen Bingson.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Kelly Graff, yes.
Jenny Christensen.
Yes.
C. Kirby, yes. The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We do have a hefty little work session ahead of us. Our next board meeting will be Monday, February 10th here at the Roosevelt Community Arena. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And we are adjourned, thank you.